Joe, you're not gonna get paid for doing that.
All right.
Welcome, everybody, to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, October 15, 2018. We'll begin this meeting at 6:30. And if you'll all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terrific, thank you. We got a full house here. What did we do today to deserve this? All right, seeing as there's no public or resident comment, we'll move right forward to the approval of the warrants. So, motion to approve payroll warrant 19-15 in the amount of $145,156.60.
I'll second that.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Motion to approve bill warrant 19-15 in the amount of $1,41,907, which breaks down as follows. Town, $280,549.39. Water and sewer, $23,781.55. Payroll withholding, $20.69. Health insurance, $31,344.88. Light bills, $299,640.6. Grants and revolving accounts, $45,450.29. Chapter 90, $84,944.21. Widder assessment, $216,314. And capital, $36,982.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Terrific. Moving right along, we have the appointment of Sergi, hopefully I pronounced that right, Franzen, a Byfield master, the position of library assistant effective October 16, 2018. The position is for 18 and a half hours per week at the rate of $12.24 an hour. Is Mr. Franzen in the audience? Ms. Mr. Oh, did I pronounce it right, Sergi?
I'm Sergey.
Sergey, okay. Let's put a little asterisk on that. Would you mind stepping to the podium, Mr. Franzen? If you wouldn't mind, that'd be great. Appreciate it. Selectman Watson, any questions or comments regarding the applicant?
No, I looked over his paperwork. Seems to be well qualified.
Selectman Dunn?
No, the same. Thank you for stepping up to the plate.
Hi, Darcy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Never better. So, this is your man?
Yes.
Okay. If that's who you want, I mean, who do we just stand in the way, right? Would someone like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Franzen? Don't be shy. All righty then.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sergio Franzen.
Sergey.
Sergey. The position of library assistant effective October 16.
I'll second that.
Terrific, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Welcome aboard, Mr. Franzen.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next, we have the appointment of Emma Fandel. Hopefully I pronounced that right.
Yes.
Of Groveland, Massachusetts. The position of library page effective October 16, 2018. This is a part-time position, averages between five and seven hours per week at a rate of $11.22 per hour.
Yes.
And you would like to discuss that candidate? I believe she's not here.
She's not here. She's 15, and it was a little daunting for her to come to the meeting and speak in front of everybody.
Really?
Just a bit.
Selectman Dunn? Any questions or comments? Selectman Watson?
No, I don't. I'll make a motion that we appoint Emma Fandel, Groveland, library page, effective October 16.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Terrific, tell them, Ms. Fandel, we appreciate her assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, discussion and possible vote. We have the close of the special town meeting warrant.
So, this is just a formality. You just need to actually vote to close it so we stop accepting articles. And then, on your next warrant, we will go through the 10 articles that have been submitted, and you can actually decide which ones you'd like to submit through.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the special town warrant.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Great, seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Terrific. Moving right along, we have Groveland Day Committee candidates. This is such a joyous day. Town has been requesting to bring back Groveland Days. I know my children enjoyed it. I know I enjoyed it. I think I can speak for members of the board saying that we all enjoyed it. It's nice to have it resurrected. Hopefully, we can do it by next year. So, do we have the candidates here? Is Leah Bates?
So, Leah's on vacation.
Leah's on vacation.
She could not be here tonight.
Lisa Chandler. All righty. Patricia Garzoni. Did I pronounce that right? Oh, that's good. All that Italian neighborhood. Beth Greenhagen. Jill Joyce.
So, Jill was unable to attend tonight. Something came up.
Jill Chrissiak. Gene O'Neil. MJ Potter. So, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 2 weren't able to show up.
Correct.
Nine committee members. First of all, I want to thank you folks for stepping up to the plate and volunteering to resurrect this day, a celebration of life and times here in Groveland, and a celebration of who we are and what we represent as a community. It's not, it doesn't go unappreciated. You have a large task, though. I want to warn you, it is a daunting task, but I think you're all capable of doing the job. And that's all the comments I have. Selectman Watson, any comments or questions from any of the candidates?
No.
Selectman Dunn?
No, any help you need, I'm here. Anything you do to help you. You know, maybe if it doesn't happen this year, like I was telling the chairman, he had the bill, that maybe we could involve a parade down the road or something like that. We may grow with it, but thank you for stepping up to the plate.
For those of you that don't know, Selectman Dunn, he's 99% heart. What you see there is just a tremendously giving individual, and when he says he's willing to help, you can take that to the bank, they will cash the check for you, believe me. I've already tried to warn them about the parade being maybe a little too much to chew off, but they seem eager enough for the challenge. So, is there anything else we need to do, other than...
No, can I just ask the group, did you all read the charge for this committee? You're all comfortable with the fact that it will be either fundraising, going out, getting sponsorships, things like that? So, you understand that that is part of this group as well?
And that it's really gonna be, you know, a G-rated kind of event? We want children to attend and with smiles, not shocked looks. Do we now vote on the committee members?
Yep.
For the sake of expediency, unless the board has an issue, I would suggest we vote on them en masse, as opposed to individually.
So, I'll make a motion that we vote to accept the nine members of the Groveland Day Committee as a whole. With the two not being here, we'll still vote on them two as well.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Congratulations, good luck, and remember one lesson. No good deed, no matter how well-intentioned, seldom goes unpunished. Keep that in mind, do a good job, do the best you can, and we're in support of you. Good luck.
So, I just want to make one comment. So, you will all get letters of appointment. After that, you'll have to go to the town clerk and get sworn in, and then you'll need to have a first meeting so that you can organize and sort of form a committee. If you need help with that, don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I can offer any advice or open meeting law guidance that you might need.
And she said sworn in, not sworn out, so don't be afraid. You're all good. You got that right. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it. Okay, next, we have Steve Sargent of the Grovelands Emergency Management Director, actually, his Grovelands Emergency Management Director, discuss our emergency readiness. Mr. Sargent, how are you? We don't want to put you on the spot. We just want the residents of Groveland to know, in light of the recent disasters we've had, witnessed to in Andover, North Andover, Lawrence, and the almost disaster we had witnessed in Auburn just a few days ago, that we are prepared for. I don't know if you can ever prepare for every disaster, but we're as prepared as we can be. I know, I personally witnessed your expertise when we had the third or fourth nor'easter in a row here in March. We lost all power, and you were really Johnny on the spot, had 99% of all the answers, and it was really a comforting feeling for me knowing that someone like you was really in charge. So, if you could explain the rest of it.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you can't totally prepare for something to that scale, but all the parts of it, we are prepared for. If you look at it, what they had is they had a lot of fires, and they had a lot of people that they had to take care of. So, the fire part of it, yes, we're prepared for that. Our fire department, they got mutual aid agreements with all the areas, the statewide mutual aid, so they'd be able to take care of the fire part of it. As for the people, we set up a shelter if we had to temporarily, and as it's happening in Lawrence, the insurance company for the gas company is picking up a lot of the expenses and housing the people, and then we get the Red Cross in there to help them get back on their feet. They have a lot of good programs. You know, we've dealt with them in the past, getting them closed vouchers and just getting them back to on their regular, you know, everyday lives as best they can.
Now, if we had a real disaster of that proportion here in Groveland, where would we house them? Would we use the Bagnell to house?
Temporarily, we would. There's some drawbacks to using that, but that would be the first thing. And what happens usually in those, like in the Lawrence one, they set up their shelter for only a short period of time until they got hotel rooms through the insurance company for the gas company, and that's where they are now. Some people, they brought temporary trailers in, and that's where they're staying at for now. But it depends on how many people are involved, because we're pretty lucky, I've been doing this since '01, and the last storm was the first time we had to set up any type of warming shelter or anything, because most of our residents, they got family or friends in the area, and, you know, it's much better for them to stay with the family. It's more comfortable than sleeping on a cot until we can, you know, find a better place for them. And if they needed help driving there, we've got the police cruisers that we could use, we've got the council and agent vans, so we'd help get the people to where they needed to go if the roads were, you know, impassable because of all the fire apparatus or whatever other situation was going on.
Selectman Dunn?
So, the Bagnell, they say it's not per se a good shelter because if we lost power, there's no generator?
The old section of it has a generator. We built one on there. The new section doesn't, so we have to go with what we had. The other drawback we have with the Bagnell, where it's an elementary school, it doesn't have shower facilities, so we couldn't house people for a long period of time there, because we have nowhere for them to use that. So, that's more of a temporary place until we can get somewhere else for them.
Okay. Now, in such a case, I'm sorry to interrupt, in such a case, do we have a, say, a mutual agreement with the school district that would allow us to maybe shelter folks in the middle school or the high school, which does have a shower?
That last snowstorm that we had, was working with West Newbury, that if we had to go for, because the middle school is their shelter, so we were gonna open a joint one if we had to do anything of any length of time, so we can pool resources and get people housed there, because it does have the shelter, showers, and stuff like that.
And a generator?
Correct.
Is there any money available through FEMA or the management to get a generator to the other part of the school?
Right now, there's not, no.
Grant, nothing, no?
The one we did, we got a grant, but that was after 9/11, when there was a lot of money out there, and that's all tightened up. So, as of right now, there isn't anything. We're always looking for it, and, you know, if we can find one somewhere, but as of right now, there isn't.
Thank you.
Selectman Watson?
No, just maybe it would make sense to get a cost on a generator for there.
Yeah, we can work on getting what it would cost.
See what it would cost a generator to hook it up. Wouldn't be a bad idea, anyway.
Yeah, I think that was part of the original plan when they did the upgrade over there, is they were gonna put it, but towards the end, they ran out of money. So, a lot of the hookups are there, the actual generator itself just isn't there.
The hookup is...
Some of them are, not all of them, but there are some of them.
In a case like that, too, I noticed in North Andover and over those towns, they went out and rented them and hooked them up.
Yeah, you know, something like that's an option if we needed something. There are ones available, but there's, you know, a cost to that, but that might be cheaper than having one permanently.
In an emergency situation, we had to get one, we could always probably get it and hook it up.
Yeah, especially if it's localized to us. We run into problems if it's a large-scale area, and now you're limited on where the resources go. But that's the case, we'd go a regional one anyway, so we wouldn't need the generator for that. We'd be housing them whether in Hayville at one of their schools, or ideally, it would be the middle school if West Newbury was also.
Now, is there a disaster plan that folks can look at, read?
There's parts of it, a lot of it for security reasons, it's redacted, but there is some plans there. If anybody has questions, they could always send me an email. It's sargent@grovelandpolice.com, it's right on the police website. So, anybody that had any, you know, questions, they could always just send an email, and we could get back to them with what we can. If that was the case, we'd be out there on the social media, the Facebook, saying, hey, this is where you need to go, this is what you gotta do. You know, we got the cruisers and the fire department that would be out there if we had to. Back at the flooding we had in Mother's Day, '06, that's we used the fire department a lot, letting people know that, you know, hey, the water's gonna be getting up high. Might be a good idea if you start thinking about going somewhere else in the case that this does happen. So, we're usually pretty good at getting it out there, and now we get that code-red system that we could get information out to people if we had to.
Now, in the case of a large-scale power outage, similar to what we had during one of the nor'easters, Comcast is down, Facebook is down, you don't have power, how, is there an alternative way to disseminate information to the citizens that couldn't access by typical means, radio, television, social media?
I mean, if we had to, we always can just go street by street with the PA systems on the, either the police cruisers or the fire department, if we had to, in a pinch, get the information out there.
I don't know, does reverse 911 work?
Yes, so I was gonna say, what we learned with the ice storm was, anyone who had a landline still had access to phone service, so that's why we were able to put out the code-red call, and people who had landlines at home were able to get it. But people that used their cellphone, if the cell tower was down or things like that, it was not accessible.
Or have a landline that's connected through via, you would be down?
Well, no, because most of them have a, your modem would have a battery backup, so it should still run because it's running through, it's not running through your electricity, it's a separate fiber line coming in. So, as long as that stayed up, you should have phone.
As long as that stayed up, and the Comcast or whoever, if you provide it stayed up, you'd be fine.
Correct, correct. The landline should still work.
Okay, is it possible to put that document, redacted as it is, onto the town website?
It's a big document, probably not, but we could print one up and have it at the library or, you know, here at the town hall or something like that. You know, it's constantly being updated, you know, but it's got phone numbers and stuff like that, and it all has to be redacted out, so we can't give the whole plan out there.
Right, right, right. No, I'm not asking you to do that for certain, just the parts of it is, the most important parts, I guess. I'm not sure if it's already on the website.
It's not, just because most of it is covered, as he said, and it would be executive session material, because it does discuss security measures for the town, so a lot of it actually couldn't be public information.
All right. Any further questions from anyone?
Sounds like he's got a handle on everything.
And, you know, I'm always available for you guys, you know, mostly I have my cellphone and my email. If you got any questions, anytime, you can go through the chairman or yourself, and then I'll get an email to all five of you with the answer.
No, I want to appreciate your quick response to our request to come in. I think we only reached out to you at the last meeting, and your quick responsiveness is very much appreciated.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, I think we appreciate your effort, thank you for your service, and have a great night.
Thank you for coming in.
Enjoy the ballgame. Okay, next, we have Mr. Joel Kahn to discuss the Soul Street redevelopment project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've got to show him to hell, I'll put that there. Good evening. My name is Joel Kahn. I'm with a company called Equity Alliance out of Bedford, New Hampshire. I'm here tonight representing Groveland Realty Trust. And while I know I put something specific to show and talk to you about, I'm also here really to talk about the 40B process and some options that are available to the town that we'd like you all to consider. So, my client, Groveland, intends to submit a 40B on the project that many of you know as being the quarry. And in doing that, I wanted the opportunity to come in front of you to really discuss what options are available in that type of situation. So, as you know, this town currently has, according to the last report issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development, 2,423 households. This is again pursuant to the last census, of which really only 80 are certified deeming affordable. So, as it relates to 40B, you're, as you're well aware, the town has an obligation to provide 10% of its housing stock to be deemed affordable. Currently, you're at 3.3%, so you have a shortage. The process typically, as we know it to be, is an applicant would take and apply to one of the subsidizing agencies for a site eligibility letter, and maybe you have a town never experienced this before, of which the subsidizing agency, and that could be one of many of them, but includes typically mass housing, would issue a letter to the town saying, hey, we'd like to come. Town has 30 days, usually it's extended for 45. They respond back with their comment, and then at that point, the department or mass housing would make its decision and issue a site eligibility letter. With that in hand, a developer would then apply to zoning board, and it would be heard through that process to whatever waivers they were seeking under the 40B regulations. And one of three outcomes really can happen as a result of those kind of hearings. Either one, that the project is outright rejected, two, it's approved as proposed, or three, it's approved with conditions that may or may not be acceptable to developers. Under the assumption that it's got a negative decision, a developer then has the right to go to the Housing Appeals Committee in Boston and make his case to why it should be approved and why he was whatever mistreated or whatever justification there was. And currently, about 90% of those hearings that take place rule in favor of the developer. So, it's not necessarily a process that a lot of towns like that hangs out there, because it really does not always give them control over this issue of affordability, 40B compliance, but there is also an alternative method. And it's commonly referred to as the friendly 40B, which I don't really quite know, because when you got a guy standing up here like me, and you come in front of you, you don't know me, and you say, hey, tell me about the process, listen, my hair would stand up a little bit, too, going, what do you have to sell? So, the 40B process, the friendly process, is a little bit different. We come in front first of the Board of Selectmen, and we make application using what's called the local initiative program. And basically, we're seeking not for the Board of Selectmen to arbitrate whether or not the plan is correct, the height's correct, the math or anything of that nature, but just whether or not they feel that this site is worthy of consideration for 40B and that they would consider supporting that. Now, that's not really much more of a proclamation beyond that, because then even with such an endorsement, the applicant must still go back to the Department of Housing and Community Development for a site eligibility letter, and even after that's issued by them, they still have to go back in front of the ZBA through process. But what the Board, by the lip process, the friendly 40B process allows one to do is to be able to negotiate potentially for some sort of mitigation package that the developer and the town may want to consider that as part of their application. Typically, or not typically, by statute, that kind of negotiation cannot take place at the zoning board level. So, if an application goes the other way, and they simply just ignore and don't come in front of the Board of Selectmen, there is no opportunity for a town to be able to sit there and say, well, you know, putting aside for a second, the ZBA's still gotta do its thing. But assuming that they could get past that, that we as a town can evaluate the issues, impacts to traffic, impacts to schools, impacts to taxation or to revenue sources, and have an opportunity to be able to sit there and be able to potentially work out what might be an acceptable mitigation package. I'm in the middle of doing that right now with a project in the town of Acton in Maynard, where the project actually runs diagonally through the town's line, where it's dangling through the project. So, I got two of them to do at once. And Acton so far has supported that approach and signed the lip, and we're moving forward accordingly. And so, I wanted to come here tonight to sort of introduce the concept to you. The specifics on the project is what's being proposed for that particular site, which is comprised of a total of 28 and a half acres, of which 14 are currently deemed suitable for development, 12 is already being, or will be conveyed to Mass Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, and two are deemed wetland. And what's being proposed are 192 units. It's modeled on another project I was involved in, the town of Coopsbury. There are four buildings each containing 48 a piece. They are four-story over structured parking, meaning that there are 40 spaces roughly that are provided indoor. It's a project that we're proposing to be really a Class A project. So, when a lot of times, people think about, oh, somebody's coming in and talking about affordable housing, they're talking about apartments, they're talking about something like that, you know, how is that gonna impact us? Well, here, we're talking about really a project that goes under the assumption that we're looking to appeal to the renters-by-choice market, not the renters by necessity, okay? And even though 25% of the units would be deemable affordable to 80% of the median household income, that really the kinds of way this project is being envisioned would have a clubhouse, would have fire pits and barbecues, and, you know, outdoor gardens and a fitness center, and it would be with units having nine-foot ceilings in them and all modern amenities and modern access to it. And really, it's appealing to primarily two kinds of parts of your population. One is clearly to the over 55 sex, who are looking to downsize but staying in the community. And a lot of times, if they're really not given opportunities to do that, you as a smaller town don't have really a lot of apartment stock, but even in towns that have such, a lot of times, those are projects that are 10, 15, 20, 25 years old, that are not necessarily really sort of how they aspire to see themselves in those later years. So, one is clearly having elevators, all units to be totally 88 accessible with the typical 5% to actually being constructed for accessibility. It's one appeal. The other one is for also young couples and/or individuals who are, you know, in their 20s and 30s and even up to their 40s, who are, who have not yet necessarily aspired to desire to buy a home in the community, just to put their roots into it, but are looking for, again, a place to become their home. And so, a project like this, really, by going to develop what we refer to as a Class A project, is really targeting a specific type of renter. The project, if was to get the endorsement of the community, and if it ultimately receives its approval, would actually satisfy your requirement under 40B unto itself, and you would never really be faced with it again in any time in decades to come. would never really be faced with it again, um, in any time in decades to come. And the reason for that is, is that 40B is sort of an odd law that was put together years ago, and it says, if a project is proposed as a for-sale project, only twenty-five percent of the units count towards affordability, um, just, and, in, in terms of your count, but yet in apartments, even though only twenty-five percent are actually set aside for affordability, and by the way, those are not non-discriminatory, they're spread evenly throughout the project, no difference in quality of finish or anything to that effect, but what's different about it is, is that all one hundred and ninety-two would count towards your affordable count. So you would jump from eighty to two hundred and seventy-two in one fell swoop, and based on where you are today, even with some growth in housing that's occurred over the past, you know, eight-plus years, you would have what was referred to as safe harbor. Safe harbor allows you to take a project, it applies whether to the Board of Selectmen or to the zoning board, and to basically reject it and say, no, we have our ten percent, we don't need to necessarily even accept the application. And what that allows a town to do then, is to become more selective and choose where other projects that may come in, that they might want to see developed, that would still qualify for additional units over the course of time. We think that this particular location for a project of this nature really works well, it's, it's isolated, there are some people around, we're not going to say that there's nobody that this does not affect, but it's also, in, in my opinion, and I've been doing this for a number of years now, is that it really goes to the, the idea of, of a total sort of vision and reuse of a property. So whoever came up with the idea to turn this into a quarry years ago and mine it, and which I understand from what Bill described to me one day, it happened very quickly that they removed all this, and now sits there as really a, a liability, has a chance to be then refilled, reclaimed, and to be reused in a productive fashion. Of course, there were things that came out about the application to refill the quarry that of course would, is reflective of the plan that you see in front of us. The habitat is protected, nobody's proposing to do anything to jeopardize any of the wetlands, and all the, all the, all the stuff that I know that this town worked very hard to work out with the owner of the property, is, is certainly well-respected and not intended to be superseded by any means, by being what is being suggested. Now, you know, as, as I described, and I apologize, Bill was, was unable to, Daley was unable to attend tonight, he was out of town, um, you know, he said, well, what do you want to try to accomplish? And I said, well, I said, I would venture to guess that this concept of a friendly 40B, the idea of approaching the board and having this conversation, is something that may or may not have ever taken place. And so I said, what I'd like to do is be able to come in here and open up a dialogue to find out whether or not this board would be interested in going down that route. If they are, then what often happens, and what I've done in similar towns, is that the Board of Selectmen forms a work group with one member of the board, the town planner, maybe somebody else is part of the town, and we sit down and we, and we go through and discuss issues to it. Uh, I, we've even gone so far in other circumstances, where we've looked at the traffic implication, we've looked at utility implications, we've looked at various ideas, and to come back then, prior to even the actual application being made, we're trying to understand how the two parties could work together. And like I say, the alternative is to just simply go straight to the zoning board, and, and to make an application, um, for 40B, and, and there was lots of discussion, is that would that be a better route, would that, and I, and it was my opinion, that I'd rather take the opportunity to see whether or not this is something that might be of interest. Of course, I'm just a guy who shows up and you're saying, you know, how do we know what he says is true, and how do we understand the process, and by all means, you should, you know, learn more about it, and I can certainly provide information about 40B, its laws, the idea of trying to go through the local initiative program as an alternative to the ZBA approach. It's our intention to make application, it's our intention to bring this in front of the public, and to open up the discussion, and to see whether or not this project could gain the necessary support. But as I say, my approach first is to come in front of a board like yourselves, and, and to, to open up the discussion, to answer your questions about it, and see whether or not, in fact, um, the friendly 40B approach is something you'd like to, to go down. And that being said, because I can have a way to talk in a long time, I'll shut up and, and take, take your questions.
Well, I'll start out with his, um, when the land developer came in here, at the time, we were on board with this project to be used as a commercial thing to try and offset taxes in the town of Groveland. I understand, the place hasn't even started getting filled in yet, and now we're being presented a 40B development in front of us, and they haven't even brought any earth in, or whatever, so I mean, this would probably be, what, five years down the road or so?
No, if, if I had to guess, okay, is that, you know, if, if we went down and said it was the friendly 40B, this is probably the timetable I tell you, I would probably lay out for you, is that we form a work group, three months of time that we'd spend talking. I then make applications for a lip, one or two meetings, because at that point, it's really not, you know, a very lengthy discussion. Of course, the public would get input at that section meeting, which is only one of several times that the public would, of course, be, be looked to for input. If you were to sit there and even suggest that a lip is something you'd be willing to sign, the application process requires that the Board of Selectmen issue a letter accompanying that, and what, as an example, the town of Acton is doing, is they had certain requirements they wanted to see as part of that, so they said, we'll sign a lip, and then we're going to put as an accompanying to that, what are things that have to be accomplished as part of that. We then go to the endless bureaucracy of the Department of Housing and Community Development, that'll take a hundred and twenty days to work through the process, then we come back, and we make application to zoning board, that could take anywhere from four months to eight, ten months. So my point is, is that the approval process in itself would take at least a year and a half to two years to, to work itself through. And, um, you know, how that coincides to what the intention is to fill this, I've, I've been told that they believe that they're going to be able to move along, and that there would be, you know, work to be able to be done at that process, at that point, but, you know, again, it's, it's way out into the future, and even then, it would take a year for it to be constructed at best, and so, we are talking anywhere from three to four years from today before there would ever be anybody living up on the project.
Okay, so where, where I was going with is kind of what I thought. So right now, being here in the town of Groveland, our fire department is stretched between our over fifty-five project, we have a lot of EMS calls to those facilities, what have you, this would probably have a percentage, I'm sure, of low incomes, you'll be putting some people into the school system. This isn't, I, I understand, he changed, but this is not what was presented us originally to us, and, and he didn't actually present something, but he kind of led us to believe we're going to be maybe doing some commercial in there, or whatever. You know, it's just, it's, it's, it puts me to the side, I mean, I, I can't believe that we haven't even done anything there, and we're already talking something new here, so.
Well, first off, the reason we've come in front of you is just because the process takes a long time.
Right.
And it obviously took a long time to get to the point where they were permitted now to start, you know, filling the quarry up. And, and I appreciate the, the response, reaction to it, and, and honestly, the things you brought up to talk about are things, meeting with the fire and the police chief, and talking about that, and talk about the impacts, those are all the things that typically, if it's done through a Board of Selectmen, it's done as part of a work group, if it's done the other way, it comes up as those are the issues that have to be addressed at the same time. So nobody's trying to circumvent and, and, and to say that, in fact, that there's no impacts in one sense or the other to a project. The reason why we talk about it as a friendly 40B as one alternative, is the fact that, as I said, we're allowed to, in that environment, to have that discussion, and maybe talk about what are the trade-offs, and what mitigation could be done, which if, if it's done through the zoning board, doesn't happen there. So, again, the zoning board could certainly deny it, and they could, they could say for all those same reasons you just said, and that, that it's certainly one outcome that could happen, but I'm always a believer that it's better to sit in the room and to sort of work through these sort of factories and see, and it could be that we reach conclusion that the Board of Selectmen can't support it, which I, again, I respect and understand.
My point, my point in my conversation is, that piece of paper should have come in here the first time, with maybe some commercial buildings or whatever, that we originally talked about, that would have been a friendly conversation that you have, and I understand, you hired to do this, and I get that, but the point I'm trying to make is, we are trying to do this to offset, this is our only last real piece of land in Groveland, where we can put some commercial in there, or put something in there to help offset the taxes, this isn't going to offset taxes, this isn't, this is going to burden our taxes. You know, they say, they say these things do not burden the town, they do burden the town. Schools, fire department, highway department, I mean, this, there's a lot that burdens the town with these things, so.
But I've been doing it for a number of years, and the answer to your question is, is that mathematically, some of it gets calculated out, all that gets figured out in the process, and I will not tell you, and kid from you to sit there and say that there are a huge economic boom to it, but, but they do tend to be on the, in the black, they don't tend, they don't tend to be in red, because they generate a lot of taxes in the process, uh, you know, one I just did in Tewksbury, it's going to generate four hundred or, I would think five hundred thousand dollars in new taxes for similar size, so they do have a boom, and, but those are the calculations we have. There is a, a proposed mix here of ten percent would be three bedrooms, and then the rest would be split between the ones and the twos, ones don't generate impacts to the schools, and there's mathematical formulas and calculations go to the other question. And I fully understand, the point is, standing here today, we don't have those facts, that's, again, what, what could be one of the outcomes and things that a work group could work through, is to discover that and understand it.
Right, so someone renting an apartment, renting, that says apartment, quarry apartments, renting an apartment.
Yes.
Does not pay taxes to the town of Groveland.
I'm aware of that.
They rent the apartment, the person that owns that building now pays taxes to the town of Groveland, or whatever, maybe if they rent the apartment, if, if they're honest, and they register their car in Groveland, we'll get some excise tax, but we're not going to get a lot of money there, and we had another development here in town that went through, and it was supposed to be a commercial development, we never got excise tax, we didn't get any taxes on, on that property, because it was never put in right in the beginning, and I believe we were shot changed on that development, we could have gotten more revenue out of it, that's, that's here and there, but I would protect it to not have something like that happen here again, so. I'm, I'm just being voiceless to the point that I'm very surprised to have this come before us, when we didn't even have a commercial one put before us in the beginning, so that's what we talked about, so.
Well, and you know, and.
I won't hold up any more of it.
And again, I, I, Mr., I certainly appreciate all the comments, you know, there's one thing about my job, is that I've been doing entitlements for a number of years, and I told my wife I was going to retire from doing that, and here I am, standing in front of you again, and so I've taken all the bullets over the years, as my.
No, no, I'm not.
And understanding that, and, but I could tell you also, this is not a, to be understated, I mean, they're talking about a fifty-plus million dollar investment in the community, so it's, it is a sizable, uh, investment of belief, that this is an appropriate use, an appropriate place of to develop such a, a project, and that, you know, that towns are often faced, and I'm, I'm dealing with this a little bit in the town of Maynard, has similarities to some characteristics, though I think you're all, as a town, in better shape than they are, uh, in many respects, is that, you know, you go to the intangibles of talking about what really makes a town in its long-term prosperity, and it does require some growth, towns need to grow to some degree, and I know that it's the job of planning boards, and zoning boards, and boards of selectmen to guide of how that growth takes place, but growth is required. By offering a diversified set of housing options, you have a greater opportunity to make Groveland attractive, to follow it, so, you know, I hear it, but there's, again, those are the things that have to be worked out and looked at, and it could be that the conclusion of those discussions is, I have no interest, I just thought it would be respectful to come in here and suggest that this idea of a friendly approach, while I get to the reaction, it's not so friendly, but has.
That's just me.
It has its advantages as it relates to the board, and how it may interact with the developer, rather than the developer circumventing this board in its entirety, that's really the point.
Second one.
Well, let's start off with, this doesn't surprise me at all, what surprises me is that it, uh, coming out so early. I figured that there was something behind the whole thing, that the, the price that the, the person bought the property for, turned it into storage buildings, wasn't going to be a return on his dollar, I, I figured there was something sneaky behind the whole thing, but anyway, that's, the other thing, I'll just echo what Bill Dunn said, but, looking at this project, the, the owner, he owns this whole piece of property?
Yes.
What's, so you're talking a hundred and ninety-two units?
Correct.
Uh, so, for one thing, you're talking, uh, at a minimum of probably four hundred trips a day of vehicles entering and exiting the property, the way I look at it here, you only have one entrance on Sewell Street, is that correct?
Yes.
So, you know, you're also aware that on Salem Street, there are, there are no sidewalks of that area?
I'm, I'm aware of that, yes.
What, what's the plans for, for sewerage and water, are they going to run, tie into a town sewerage system, I think with a hundred and ninety-two units, that, that they probably have to?
There is some idea to approach the town and talk about an extension of sewer that would benefit others along the way, yes, but it has yet, there's no, at this level, we haven't done anything further than that, so there's also no traffic study been done, talk about sightlines, whether or not deceleration lanes are, whether or not help connectivity, or what, if sidewalks get installed for some, none of that has been discussed at this point in time.
So, so you haven't done a traffic study, so you don't know what the.
Not, not at this point, again, that could be an outcome of the work group, that you sit there and say, I want to do a traffic study, we're going to have a peer review today, let's have a discussion, let's see what it says, so, you know, and again, those are, those are parts of the process.
So you, we could have, we could have an impact, well, before I get into that impact, you've got a hundred and ninety-two units, what's the breakdown as far as, how many bedrooms in, in, in these hundred and ninety-two units?
Well, ten.
How many one, how many two, how many three?
Under, under 40B, you require that ten percent of your housing stock be put, set aside for three bedrooms, one of the requirements that they have in order to attract some families to this environment.
So, I'm sorry, what, what was the percentage?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, so you're going to have.
A hundred and ninety-two, there are nineteen units that have to be carved out for that, we'll, we'll call twenty for round numbers, so out of the hundred and seventy-nine units remaining, that there would probably be a split of fifty-fifty between one and two-bedroom units. And, again, having gone so far, it's the layout floor plans, or anything else, the architect that, we, that I recommended to, to Mr. Daley, is an architect that I've used at in New Jersey, um, who was involved in the Tewksbury project that I did, who only specialty is apartments, that's all he does a year, is apartments, so he brings a lot to the table in his expertise, so, and that project was relevant in it, excuse me, it, you could see that in the project, and highly recommend you see that project to understand it.
So you could, at a hundred and ninety-two units, with the amount of three, three bedroom and two bedrooms, you could see over four hundred, four hundred-plus kids in the school system?
No, that's not true whatsoever, first off, a one-bedroom unit has zero, um, kids that impact into a school, it, it does not happen, it statistically, there's a study done by Rutgers, which is the benchmark for almost every community they've ever worked within the Commonwealth, and what they do is they calculate, based on statistical modeling throughout the Commonwealth, is based on the number of bedrooms, based on whether it's market or affordability, and they run through the calculation, I have not done the calculation to determine that yet, but, again, from your standpoint, I understand the reaction, which is it's going to impact our schools, that process will, will go through it, we'll meet with the school board, we'll discuss it, we'll go through the study, we'll do the analysis, and I think you'd be surprised, I'm not saying there won't be kids.
Yeah, I think I'm going to be surprised, because I think it's probably going to be more than what I estimate.
No, it's not.
What do you estimate, what do you estimate off the bat, of how many kids for the school system?
Somewhere around fifty.
Fifty?
Yeah, like a two-bedroom unit, uh, it's like point six kids per, per two-bedroom.
How about, how about, how about instead of the fantasy numbers, how about coming up with a real figure, fifty, it, that is, doesn't even meet the common sense test?
As I said, sir, I've yet to do the study on it, and, but before I do the study, I'd want to meet with somebody from the school board, agree upon the premise in which it's being done, and then it would be calculated out.
Well, what does meeting with the school board have to do with how many kids, are they going to impact the school system?
Because the school maintains the calculation logs and, and, on what they're experiencing, and they also do studies constantly as it relates to their funding and stuff, based on certain modeling, so I want to make sure they accept the Rutgers study, the premise of it, and then it could be done.
I want to hold you to the fifty, estimate.
That's really not nice to do on our first meeting, but okay.
Well, well, that, that's, that's what I mean, is that I'm looking for, uh, normal figures, and I don't think, I think you're way, way underestimating.
Well, you think that stating four hundred children are coming out of here is.
Well, I'm looking at two, at two per, at two per unit, and you've got some three bedrooms, you, you, you don't think that people are going to move into a three-bedroom and not, and not fill them up, so you could have, you could have, uh, two kids who a bedroom, you could have, those three bedrooms could have four kids.
That, that's not statistically out there and backed up by plenty of. That, that's not statistically out there and backed up by plenty of examples of what it takes place. It, it just isn't that. And I may not be able to swear you, and that's again, why we, we go through process to, to do that. And listen, I, I, you're not the first person who's ever sat there and said to me, oh, it's going to generate a lot of kids, and then it doesn't work out.
I think we ought to name the project Fantasy Land.
As you said, you're the messenger, and you're here before us.
I'm a nice guy, so hopefully you'll decide that.
No, no, yeah, but I can tell you, I own a three-family home, and people don't treat that home like it's their home. They, they rent it, they don't care, they treat the outside of it the same way. I am very skeptical when you have rental property like this, they're not going to treat it like their own. So, you know what I mean, in, in, in the, it gets to a point sometimes where you have to find renters, you rent to, you say you want sixteen hundred bucks, but nah, I got to get someone in here, so I go less. You start getting riffraff and everything else, and not that I'm saying it looks like a high-end project, but I get skeptical of having renters. But, that's, that's another day for another conversation.
Part of my work, working with some of my clients, I, I'm, I have reporting to me today about eight hundred units worth of apartments, and honestly, that, sure, there's one that we have in Lawrence where we, we have our challenges, but the answer is, is that, I don't know if you're all familiar with the project over in Salisbury, you head out to the BQ old go-kart, mini-go-kart place over there?
Yeah.
Okay? There's two hundred and ten units there, of which I'm responsible for, and I did the development for the client, and that's not the case. Matter of fact, we only have fifteen students that are coming out of there at the moment, for whatever reason.
Probably the price for the units that a family couldn't afford.
Well, these are, these are, to be quite honest, in order to be able to attract debt and equity for a project of this nature, sure, the price is not going to be on the low end here. We're talking about one-bedroom units probably being in excess of nineteen hundred, and two-bedroom units at twenty-two and twenty-three hundred dollars a month, absolutely. But the market has shown a tremendous trend. As a matter of fact, the market in Massachusetts, recent studies have indicated that it's despite the fact that there's been tens of thousands of multifamily projects developed in the last twenty years, it's still a shortage, and, and, and a need for it. And I'm not too sure right now in parts of Seaport District, I'd be so gutsy to put up a twenty-eight, twenty-eight-story building, but the answer is, is that there's still a shortage of it, and the projects I'm involved in are all occupying at ninety-five percent.
Mr. Khan, a quick question, if.
Yeah, oh yeah, I, I've got a lot more to say, but I'll hold it for another time.
Terrific. You said the average cost of the apartments were going to be what?
That the, to rent them, would it be anywhere from nineteen hundred a one-bedroom to, again, I, I'm telling you, based on what we looked at today in the market, one thing about my job as a development consultant is, is that I've, I've run, the owner is a pro forma based on what I envisioned world to be today, that'll be at least, at least thirty, thirty per year before we ever get to a finish line. But what the market tells me today is that the one-room, one-bedroom units are leasing for approximately two dollars and fifty cents a square foot, and the two-bedroom units at roughly two dollars a square foot. One-bedrooms would be probably eight hundred and twenty-five square feet, maybe eight hundred and fifty square feet. Two-bedrooms would run anywhere, and again, I'm telling you stuff that has yet to be designed, but they generally run a thousand and seventy-five feet up to about twelve hundred and fifty, twelve hundred and seventy-five square feet. They all have washer and dryers in them, you know, this is a different project.
And that's what's considered affordable?
No, see, again, there's a really misnomer about understanding what forty B and what they mean by affordability. So seventy-five percent of units are going to be market rate based on what I just told you the rates to be. The other twenty-five percent are affordable at eighty percent of the area's median household income. That's determination is made based on Department of, excuse me, HUD's annual calculation of median household income from the area and published by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And so the rent for those units is set forth on that. There is a process there that one goes through to lease it, that they have to qualify. When a unit first comes on the market, the first time the project's built, there's done what's first called local preference, where it's first advertised for a series of months in the local paper, applications are taken first with the idea of trying to first look to, you know, school teachers and local residents who may want to stay in the community, who want to qualify, and then after that's been exhausted out, does it then get opened up to people who live outside the community under that. This is not deemed to be low-income housing, that's not, that's not the case. Eighty percent of the area median household income.
It's not going to be low, that's for sure. I don't know if you've heard, we're a very, very rich town here in Groveland. We have, we've paved the streets with gold. You just asked the school district that we are somehow considered the richest town of the three.
Yeah, but you don't get to really set it completely because, believe it or not, it's based on a designation of areas, and the area that's really defined here is in part, I think, tied to the Lawrence market. So the answer is, it's not just based on the median household income in Groveland that's specific. It's, it's a little bit more that they do to calculate and take over an area when they do this, this form of calculation. So, I, I can't tell you what those numbers are today, but I certainly will in the future.
I too have my concerns about a development that large on that, in that area, the impact of the infrastructure, the cars. I figure one and a half car per, per apartment, you're going to get two hundred and eighty-eight vehicles entering and exiting that complex twice a day. I'm not quite where Selectman Watson is with four hundred children, I think the eighty-six units, one-bedroom, would not allow for a child. You do have two.
It's only nineteen have three bedrooms, so, oh, I'm sorry, eighty-six have one bedrooms.
Eighty-six will have one bedroom, so I, I cross those off. You have twenty with three bedrooms, so I can envision at least two children in those per, and then you have eighty-six two-bedroom units, I can figure one, so I'm going to say somewhere between your fifty and his four hundred is where probably the number's going to be, around one sixty, one seventy-five. But we'll, we'll let the Rutgers study and, and that determine it. What I would like to ask though, seeing as I see our resident Mona Lisa Vito of the planning world sitting in, in the back there, if she could come up and, and maybe educate us on, give us a little, anything you might be able to inject into this conversation as far as what you know about these type of developments, the impact in the community, pros, cons, enlighten us if you could.
Yeah, I have one question for you.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I got one question, and I'll let you go. So that, that roadway going in there, is that a full width roadway going in there?
We haven't gone that far, to be quite honest, Mr. Dunn, to, to do anything but what you see here, which is a conceptual plan at this point in time. I'm just using this as purely an illustration to discuss.
No, no, I understand, but what I'm saying is, what's the sense of going farther on if it's not a full range road, you can't get the fire apparatus in there and what have you, what's the sense of going on with it?
There are many ways in which one gets and deals with fire apparatus up to a single access. One is they can do a boulevard with a center island, and that counts as therefore for fire emergencies. So there, there are alternatives. And again, we, to be quite honest, we just simply have not gone that far. And remember, my point tonight is to sit here and just to discuss a process between trying to educate and understand the concept of one versus another, to see what your, your feeling is. If the feeling coming out of this board is that we have no interest whatsoever, then that tells me what I really needed to know and I accomplished tonight, and then the developer, the property owner will decide how they wish to proceed. And that's not holding any sort of, you know, anything over anybody's head, it's not intended to do any of that, but really, that, that is really the point of doing it. And I certainly have, you're, you're not the, the first community that's ever walked in and, you know, that I get the first reaction as I, as I, I would expect, you know, and I'd be disappointed and surprised if I did not. But, you know, it, it, it really, to me, still makes a more sensible approach to how one goes about the process than going through what they refer to as the unfriendly format. And so I just wanted to come here and offer that up tonight, and certainly take the comments from anybody from planning staff on, one, is Mr. Khan full of it in terms of what forty B friendly and unfairly means, and I hope you'll comment on that if you have some familiarity with it. And then, you know, as to impacts, listen, it, these are many things that have to be talked out, traffic, all that other stuff over time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. No, I, I'm asking Ms. Oldham to come up as our Tom Plan to discuss any information you could shed in lightness.
Definitely. I'm not, not too familiar with the actual area that's called into question. I was told about that this was going to be talked about at the meeting, so I did do a little bit of research. So I'm not exactly sure what the vision is for the community, or what the community or Board of Selectmen have already discussed already concerning this particular site or the history of it. But in terms of forty B, I will say that the, the two options that he's presenting is essentially exactly what he's, what he's laid out, which is, you know, the town will have more of an ability to sit down with the developer and discuss the sewer connections and making it more of things that the town would like to see as the development, as opposed to them coming in, going before the ZBA and filing an application with the state, leaving the town with limited ability to actually impose any really restrictions that they would like to see for the development. So it does give you an opportunity to work with the developer. Sometimes forty Bs can be very contentious, so it, it really goes back to, again, what you, we're all discussing, what is the vision of the community, does the community want to push forward for something different? The ten percent housing goal is something to always take into consideration when talking about forty Bs and affordable housing, whereas Groveland on that percentage mark. We did just do a housing production plan recently that shows us, I'm not too sure where.
I think three, three percent.
Three percent at our, our affordable housing. So a development like this would, would allow us to get closer to that ten percent and ward up any future development that would put the, the town in jeopardy of some of the open space and the space that, that we do want to preserve. So there are some benefits to affordable housing and what affordable housing can offer us. In this particular situation, the only thing that I would just point out, because again, it's really the vision of the community and what the Board of Selectmen want to put forward, is just to acknowledge again that the sewer connections and the impact and the mitigation to the community with a forty B, a friendly forty B, is a lot easier than with the forty B that just filed with the ZBA, and really limits the town's ability to actually negotiate on behalf of what the town is looking to for in a development.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a lot to digest in the future.
I, I just, I just wanted, before you get kicked out of here.
Nobody's going to kick you out.
No, okay. Is that, I'm, I'm hoping to get guidance, and I'm not looking for anything more than that, is if, if I would, I would, if, if in fact you all sit there and listen to Congress and say that, okay, I get, I got my first reaction to it, I'm not happy, but I'd rather go down the friendly forty B, then what I would hope with the outcome of this meeting would be, is that we would form a work group, and we would sit down and see whether or not, in fact, there could be a mitigation package that would properly reflect the needs of both parties. If, if that's not the intention, then that's fine too, and then it tells me what I, I need to do. And, but I, I know my, my client has looked at me and said, well, you know, don't leave without asking for the order, so I'm, you know, being so bold is to just hopefully get some sort of indication from you all. And if that's something you, of course, I would expect you want to go even talk amongst yourself, and I'll be happy to come back, you know, the next time you meet, and give you an opportunity to, you know, eat up on me again. I could be funny after a while, so I could tell you if you hang around for a little bit. Last part's okay. I had a woman recently in the project say to me, I, after an hour and a half's worth of, you know, taking it from the people, she said, stood up and said, now I just want to tell you, I like you, I just don't like the project. So, you know, if we accomplish something else, I hope that'll be something that, at least in our relationship, as we sort of deal with what I believe is a very serious and important issue for the town, I don't take this lightly by any means.
Oh, Mr. Khan, I'd like to grant you your wish, but at this point in time, we have two board members that aren't here, and I, I would really be remiss if I didn't allow them to weigh in on such a important project as, as this one.
Agreed. Would you like to come back and entertain them for a few minutes in a, in a, in a shortened version of this, so we don't take up the board's time inappropriately? I'm happy to do that as well, too.
I think at a future time when the entire board is present, might be much more apropos. I don't want to exclude the valuable input that those two board members that aren't able to attend tonight may have. I'd be very interested in what their feelings and sentiments and concerns are as well.
No, I, I would hope that, you know, everybody would want to weigh in. So if, if you want to put me on the agenda for, for the next time, and I'll come down back, I'm happy to do so. You're all nice people, and happy to come and spend some time, and maybe before then you might have other questions and things that, you know, come up that you may want to, you know, throw at me, and maybe I'll even come through with a little bit more statistics. I'll do my homework on what the Rutgers study says, and we can talk about, you know, the over-under on that deal, so.
Great. I will definitely speak with Denise in the future about having you come back when I know there will be a full board here to hear you, and I appreciate you coming in today and giving us this heads up on what the new vision is for that piece of property in Groveland.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
No, sir, it's, it's not, not appropriate at this time. So moving right along, we have the Highway Superintendent Position and Job Description. I've read it, it seems to be very comprehensive.
Yes, so that was compiled from several different positions. Highway superintendents functioning outside of a DPW are very rare in the state. The most comparable position around is Topsfield. So this is compiled from several different job descriptions. I think it is pretty comprehensive. As I indicated at the last meeting, I did, and it's highlighted, I did increase salary range based on what the market is for this position. I do think that with Bob retiring November eighth is his plan. If he continues on in a one-day-a-week-per-diem setting just to get paperwork and things taken care of, I think by the time we fill it, I would expect to have somebody in place mid-December if we advertise it this week. So I do think we'd have the available funds in the budget to offer a higher salary based on qualifications.
Do you believe that the salary is enough to, to engage and retain a qualified individual?
Yes and no. I think yes. I do know the Finance Board is continuing their discussions on moving forward with a potential DPW. I have structured this job description to add in criteria for what we would ideally have as a DPW director, possibly hiring the proper candidate that then could be promoted into that role. Obviously, that would come with a higher salary. I can tell you Wes Newberry just replaced their DPW director, and their range was, I think, ninety-two to one thirteen. And they got a remarkable number of candidates. They were very pleased with the quality of applicants they received. Again, it's a DPW director, and it's a higher salary, but I think it's, it's a good salary for the position that's here now. So I, I would be hopeful that we would be able to attract decent candidates that have experience, that would be able to step into the role fairly seamlessly, obviously needing to know probably Groveland, but I think it's doable at this salary.
So at ninety, we're in the ballpark, we, we, we haven't hit the bullseye, but we're on the dot board.
Yes.
Selectman Dunn, any comments or?
Nope, so that, that position, we could go into a DPW position down the road.
I would say that would be a potential, yes, that would be a potential option.
We're hiring, and we're going to hire them based on that, we're going to hopefully change this over to DPW.
Again, it's hard to hire someone, but that's what the criteria is, so yes, so, so that is a potential opportunity, yes.
So I wouldn't want to bring someone in and then turn around and have to say, well, we're changing this to DPW, and then we're going to be looking for something different.
Correct, correct, and that would not be my intention either.
Right, okay.
And at that point, we could encompass a number of departments under that one umbrella of DPW.
Yes, so the Finance Board is really looking at, with the DPW, they've actually asked the Water and Sewer Commissioners to come in on Wednesday to our next meeting. There's been some discussion over the last year that elected positions are becoming harder to fill, people don't want to serve in those roles. There was a vacancy for many months on the Water and Sewer Commissioners. So some members actually approached me about going to either appoint it or forming a DPW, that they, and they themselves were in favor of that. So I think we would look at not a full DPW, which would incorporate the Light Department, but a, I guess, limited, so that it's pretty much everything but, facilities, the cemetery, water and sewer, highway.
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec, or fields and field maintenance, things like that, yes. That would all be under the DPW umbrella. Again, pretty much everything with the exception of the light department is, I believe, the finance board's goal. That's what they've been discussing over the last, you know, six or seven months.
I think that should be the town's goal. The town has grown such that we need, town needs to have a point person that we can go to, that can take care of all this stuff, as opposed to, and an appointed individual where they are accountable 24/7/365, there's no waiting three years. So that's, that's great. Selectman Watson, any comments or questions?
No, looks, looks pretty good.
So if you are all in agreement with the way it is written and the salary, I will post it tomorrow with the expectation that we'd probably give a three-week preference for resumes received, but the position would be open until filled. And then depending on how the board would like it handled, I would plan to proceed as normal, weed down the resumes to about three, and then present those three candidates to the board for formal interviews and appointments.
I have no problem with that. I think that's the best process, where you vet the candidates and present the best options to us.
So do we need to vote on that?
I would say you should vote to approve the job description if you're on.
I'll make a motion that we vote for the highway superintendent position and job description, and let Denise go ahead and post it.
I'll, I'll second it.
So we have a motion, a second. Let me just make sure that the motion is correct. Wait, Bill's motion is to accept the highway superintendent job description as stated and to begin advertising immediately. And we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstained?
So I will just add to that, which I was going to discuss briefly under finance director time. The governor actually signed our special legislation at the end of last week. So we are good to now proceed at your next meeting, even though it's almost a moot point, because it's only for about 10 days. But you will need to appoint Bob Arakalian. The law requires him to be the first appointed highway superintendent, so he will become appointed on the 29th. Again, he's retiring nine days or 10 days after that, but he is required to be appointed in that role until he chooses to vacate. So we'll have that as a-
As an agenda item for the meeting.
As an agenda item for the appointment. And then at that time, or when there's a full board, we can certainly discuss if you would like him to continue, as I said, probably one day a week. He feels that that's all that would be needed right now, that the guys know their respective tasks. He would come in, handle all the paperwork, phone calls, things like that, until the position is filled. And that's what they did in Wes Newberry as well. Even though the DPW director retired, he's still filling in until someone new is actually starting, so.
All righty. So next item is to approve and sign the amendment to the Compass Conservation Restriction for the Meadow Pond Reservation, approved at town meeting on April 24, 2017, under Article 39. I see Mr. Dempsey approaching the podium. So, Mr. Dempsey.
Yes, Mike Dempsey, representing Conservation Commission. So just a very brief overview to update you on what this is. We have the Meadow Pond Reservation. It was originally purchased back in 2002, and part of that purchase, we had a, we had to get a conservation restriction on it to meet the grant requirements that we got. And so the state Fish and Game holds the conservation restriction on it. That means we still own it, we control it, but they are the people that make sure that we follow the rules. So since then, in 2007 and 2009, we purchased two other additional parcels. One was an eight-acre parcel off of Uptack Road, and the other one was a six-acre parcel off of Stevenson's Way. There is also a 10-acre parcel that's more at the bottom of Uptack Road that wasn't, was the original Meadow Pond Reservation, but didn't get included in any conservation restriction. So back in 2015, I believe, we passed a, a warranted town meeting to approve putting conservation restrictions on some of these properties that require them. So this is specifically for Meadow Pond only, and Fish and Game has graciously accepted taking over the conservation restriction and spreading it onto these other three parcels for us. Two of those parcels require a CR, so normally, you know, we would have to pay the legal costs and a few other things. So having Fish and Game do it saves us money. This has gone through town meeting. They voted to approve it last April. You voted to go forward with it by putting it on the town meeting warrant, and it also had to go through the state legislature. So that took, oh, that took almost a year to do, and they just approved that in the beginning of September. So it's all ready to go. All you have to do is sign it, and I'll have a major pain in my butt taken care of.
I'm not sure we want to do that.
That was one of the worst things you could have said.
I'm sorry.
I'm only joking. So this basically is just a formality. It's the last step in the process that's already been decided, voted on, approved.
Exactly.
And we're just dotting the last T and crossing the last, dotting the last I and crossing the last T. Is that correct?
So we need to make a motion-
I would think so.
Approve the, and sign the amendment to the Conservation Restriction for the Meadow Pond Reservation, approved at town meeting on April 24, 2017, under Article 39.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey.
Thank you.
It's always, always a pleasure seeing you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have votes of the board. We have the minutes from the September 10, 2018, meeting.
Well, they'll look to be in order. I'll move for passage.
Second it.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
We have minutes from the September 17, 2018, meeting.
I'll also move for passage on that.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Moving right along to older unfinished business. Let's start with Selectman Watson. Any older unfinished business?
Uh, no.
Selectman Dunn.
Okay. So as I said, I asked Denise to give me the names of the people in charge at the Valley Screw building of Washington Street. I did read a, a letter in my packet from the Sam, which sent the letter off to the owner, but I talked to Derek. I didn't get his last name. He told me that the building was cleaned on the interior of drums and containers and any kind of hazardous waste. It's as far as they're gonna go. They have no jurisdiction over the building whatsoever. He has jurisdiction over the land in the back. The land is almost clean. It should be at between a level of 20 and 30. It's just about there. There's no hazardous waste on the site whatsoever. They're just about ready for completion of that project, and he said, I'm sorry, they can't help you with that building. But he said they pushed back on the owner during that project for whatever reason, and he said the owner finally went down there, kids were getting in the building. They pushed back on the owner and threatened him with certified letters and what have you. The owner sent the company down there to board the building up. So he suggested send him a certified letter on behalf of the selectmen, get it signed, send it off certified mail, and be real firm, and maybe the owner will board the building up. But as he, as we all know, the owner doesn't want anything to do with that building, because there's a lien on it for quite a bit of money and what have you, not from the town, but from the state. And he doesn't think that owner will have anything to do with that building for quite some time. Other than maybe the town wants it, he'll maybe give it to us. And that's what, that's what he said.
Well, that-
Now, if the state were to take over that building, what would happen to it then?
They don't want it.
They won't take it over either.
They don't want it.
They don't want nothing to do with it.
They have, no, it's just like us. We won't place it into tax title. They won't take it, because it's just, the liability is too high. The amounts that are owed on that property, the liability is too high.
And the owners are no longer-
They're around. He's around, but he doesn't, why does the owner want something that-
Right, well, I think to Sam's letter, and he did address the fact that it's not properly secured. I mean, that is an offense that Sam can go after. We do have penalties in our bylaws. That is something that he will continue to monitor. I think fencing too. He's, he's required to have fencing around it, which he had at one point, but it's been removed. So, you know, we can certainly send an additional letter. But Bill, the gentleman you spoke with was the EPA. Did you get in touch with the DEP, the state?
The Janet lady, he's on vacation until like, I want to say the 18th of October, so I called that gentleman and spoke to him.
That, that roof is gonna come in this winter.
Yep, and he said that he was in the building, because I told him what the person had said to me. He said, I've been in that building. He said, if that roof fell in, it's gonna fall in, it's gonna implode in, it's not gonna push the cinder block walls out.
And that's what Sam has said.
He said, don't worry about it. He said that it's a sturdy cinder block building around there, and he said, I don't think it'll knock the blocks down.
Yeah, and that's what Sam said, and so that's why he said on that, he has limited jurisdiction. He did ask the fire department to go out and mark it as abandoned and unsafe for them to enter. But if this, if the roof collapses, there's still nothing that, there's no action that we can legally take on that piece of it.
He had told me of a, a building, and I want to say it was in like Somerville. He was giving me an example, Somerville. Same thing kind of happened out there. What happened is they deemed no, they washed their bill on the building, the state and the DPE. They ended up turning it and giving it over to Somerville free, and they, they were able to get that building with no, no penalties or anything against it, and they got it and they took it over. But it's a process, and you have to start the process. First thing is to get them to waive all their fees and everything, and then, he said, I'm sure the owner would deed it over to you guys, because he's, it's no good to him, because we're not gonna, they're not gonna, you know, let him get away scot-free, so. He, the best person in the best position would be the town of Groveland if they were to try and get that property. So, and like I said, he just basically said, I can't help you. I had a 20-minute conversation with him, and he said, best of luck, so.
But Bill, they're not finished cleaning it. They're wrapping it up.
They have about, he said they have about another month or two, I think, left. They're just doing like monthly or bi-monthly meetings. They go out there and they check the tubes and stuff. It, it, it's, he said it great, it's the level should be between 20 and 30. He said, we're almost there. We're off by five, I think is what he quoted me. So it's almost there. And once that, once they reach their levels, all the equipment's been taken out of the big building, the rental building that they put up, that's all gone. It's just a matter of whatever they're doing chemically or something there. He said, we're almost there. Another few months is what he thought. So he said, any other questions? We can call him back and talk to him. He'd be willing to talk to us, but he said, unfortunately, we did our part on the building, and we only did it just because we didn't want anything from the building going into what we cleaned, so they just went in and cleaned it inside the building.
Do we, do we end up with that building, or does the church end up with it? It's on their property.
It's still sitting there, and I think what he had told me, it's a church, it goes back to the church under a 30-year lease, and they, they end up back with it.
The church.
St. Pat's.
The behind building, right.
And they get the building back once the lease is up.
But now that, that parish is really-
They're still going. They still meet on Sundays, and not as like it used to be, but they still meet.
There's no regular masses there.
Yeah, there is. I think it's 10 o'clock in the morning. I see them there. Once in a while, there's weddings, not a lot, but there, there still is. I see fumes.
Yeah, yeah, they, they do, I think they do one, one a week there.
I think the CCD kids meet there too.
Yes, that, that I know.
Right. So that's all I got on that. And then, what are we under, under old business? So I was wondering if we had any news on the land sales?
Nothing solid. There's still, the two attorneys are still ironing out the final details of the deeds. So we are close. They were hoping now for an October closing. We were waiting on the buyer's attorney for the two matters that are before them, both the land purchase and the land swap. So it's all in their hands right now to get back to our attorney who provided draft deeds.
And we did provide him with a 15-day letter and a 30-day-
Yeah, well, they got back to us within the 15 days, and now that, it's now between the attorneys, so. They, our attorney said we have no problem closing. It's just a matter of their attorney reviewing the deeds and getting back to us.
Ask him what's going on?
Oh, we do quite often.
Okay.
But now in that, in that 15-day letter, I thought we stipulated that within 30 days from response to that letter, we want to close.
Yep.
Will we achieve that goal?
Again, it all depends on their attorney. So right now, we're on target, because it was only at our last meeting that we made that 15-day. So we still have, I think, until the beginning of November before we have that closing, based on that timeline.
Okay, and are we prepared at the 31st day to walk away from this deal and say, sorry, you had your time, we, we're gonna move on and?
Are we advertising?
Is that what?
Well, I mean, I would recommend to see where we are on the 30th day. If we have a closing schedule, but it's not for the following week, obviously, we would, we would give them stay until if, you know, if we have one actually scheduled and everything is ready to go, but that actual closing, then I think we would make that exception, otherwise.
Otherwise, yeah, it seems like they're just continuing to drag their feet on this. It seems to be going on a lot longer than I would think would be normal business practice.
I, I will say, the buyers are as anxious as we are.
What's their problem?
It's not their problem. I think it's their attorney's problem. It's-
Find another attorney.
It's, it's him getting back to them, getting back to us. He seems to be what's holding us up right now.
What's the number Bill called?
But I last spoke to our attorney on Thursday, and he hadn't heard back, so I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow morning and see what's changed in the last few days.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and I have one more thing. So we possibly had a scare in the town of Groveland recently, where we were gonna possibly maybe lose our finance director. So I would like this board to do some serious consideration. I know we had talked about possibly doing a townwide census, which would go out in the light bill or whatever. I'd like to, in the next meeting, have everyone bring in what they want to put on that census, so we can get moving on this and, you know, get our ducks in a row.
You mean the questionnaire survey we were done at, tossing about? I agree. We dodged the, we dodged the big bullet there. I, I'm sad that she didn't get the appointment, but I am also so grateful that she didn't get the appointment. She's truly been an asset to this town. Anybody that doesn't know that is either in severe denial or just not really well-informed. So again, so glad you're still here.
So moving forward, what do we need to do? Do we, we just need to compile some questions for that census?
Yes, so if you're gonna send out sort of a sense of the town, get some ideas and feedback from the residents, yes, we can put together some topics.
And I know you've done a lot of work too with Wes Newberry on how they went about making that happen.
You have the packet, right?
Yeah, I sent it out to the board months and months and months ago.
Okay, so-
I can resend it.
Yes, would you please resend that, because we need to re-energize that discussion.
Just a real quick, a couple of ideas I had for that census was the town manager position, the center street property use, the Pine CPC projects, if they're willing to go forward some projects in the CPC at the Pines. Elected positions versus voted positions, a town parade, and a seating center. I mean, that was just some of my ideas. I think that if we can get the other board members, maybe drop them an email or whatever, have them put their ideas together, bring them in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should reach out via email to all the board members and have them, say, 10 questions.
And put it on for next week's agenda.
And then I'll give us 50 that we can toss about and come down to a reasonable number that we can send out as a survey.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you should be more than one page front and back. I don't think we should inundate residents, but-
Beyond that, you'll get no response.
Right.
It'd become a task. We don't want it to become a task. We want them to be like a crossword puzzle fun to do. Anything else, Selectman Dunn?
That's it for them.
Okay, let's see. Got a few things. The personnel handbook, I know we discussed this. I know it has died many, many a sad death. I'm determined that it will not die this time. How are we moving forward on that? They have a draft proposal yet that we can- They have a draft proposal yet that we can start to chew on?
So, not that I know of. They were scheduled to have a meeting tonight to finalize their draft. I was told right before I walked in here that that meeting was postponed until next Monday. I think because they're down to three members out of the five-member committee, it's tough sometimes for them to have a quorum if one person ends up traveling unexpectedly. So, they have rescheduled tonight's meeting to next Monday. Their agenda for tonight was to finalize their draft to present to the Board of Selectmen. So, I do think they're close. They're at their finish line. I think they just wanted to fine-tune some things. Their last actual meeting, I had met with them and gave them my suggestions. I think they were looking to incorporate some of those, change some of the language. As we've discussed here at this board, I recommended they add in the language to grandfather the employees that sort of would not be impacted by some of these newer changes. So, they were going to revisit those and then compile their draft. So, I do think it's close. It's just been their scheduling. They really haven't met since, I think, the beginning of September because of travel.
Great, and I would just like to throw this out there that folks shouldn't be alarmed or have any anxiety over this personnel handbook. We're just trying to update it to represent what modern life is like, and we want it to be as least impactful as possible on current employees. We're not out to get current employees or anything of that nature. We're just trying to update a book that will make us easier to hire and retain top-notch qualified people, the people that we depend on every day to do business.
Right, I mean, I would compare it to, in some instances, a union contract. Union contracts, every three years, you're tweaking it, you're changing the language, you're improving it to retain those employees, to add benefits, to remove benefits, things like that. This has not been updated in 15, 20 years in its time. As I've said in the past, I've struggled with attracting good employees from other communities because of the benefits that we lack here, specifically vacation time and things like that. So, it really, exactly as you said, it's not to punish existing employees. It's not to take benefits away from them. It's to make us stronger and more attractable to candidates coming in and retaining them. I mean, that's really what we need here.
And I understand that the past failures of this, that's why I'm pushing and so adamant about getting this done, that it doesn't die another merciless death. It's in the past. The Pines bathrooms, how are we moving on that? If we, I know the middle section was open last week. There's power, there's some water. When will the actual, although now it's almost too late in the season to be of any use?
Yes, so they will not be functioning. We actually met with the plumbers last week. Part of our difficulty now is unfortunately, the Merrimack Valley explosions are now impacting us because plumbers are really very limited on their time because they're spending so much time there. I did meet with our plumbers. We did talk about getting it on the schedule for them to get in and actually install the fixtures now. The floors are done. I believe the walls are done. They were putting up the partitions. So, now we just need the plumbing fixtures. But we did discuss at this stage, it does not make sense to turn the water on. They'll install everything and then wait for the spring to officially christen, I guess, the bathrooms.
Great, so that'll play right into my idea about a ribbon-cutting ceremony and maybe a first-flush raffle.
Yes.
One for the blue, one for the pink. I also noticed around the bathrooms, they have now put in some concrete sidewalks. However, they haven't completed them to the point where they're ADA-compliant or even accessible. When will that work be done?
So, they were tying it into upcoming paving. So, I'm not sure if they did it last week when they finished some of the paving, but that's what they're waiting for. So, to do that ramp sort of, because I know I heard some criticism from people at the Speedway reunion that whomever chose to place the porta-potties, they placed it in a non-ADA-compliant area. And we were criticized, and I told them, "That's not our event. We did not pick that placement." You know, unfortunately, I sympathize, but that was not our doing.
Yes, they put them right up against the wall facing the ball fields. And with the way they did the sidewalks, there's just dirt there that you can't, you couldn't navigate over in a wheelchair or anything else like that. So, it was a difficult chore for them, I would say.
So, that is in the process. Like I said, we're just waiting for the company to sort of come out and wrap that up for us.
Okay, and then, I happen to have the pleasure of being down there last Saturday because I have the fall baseball team that's going on down there in the Pines. And again, it was a real concern when I'm watching all these motor vehicles. We had the dog people. We had the Haverhill rowing team. We had girls softball. We had boys baseball. We had the Pines reunion, Speedway, and there's just nothing in that area to slow cars down. Have we got anywhere on these speed bumps?
I can follow up. I know we've talked, Bob and I have talked several times about different types of speed bumps. Whether, at one point, he was gonna wait for the company to come out and actually put the asphalt speed bumps. I'm not sure if that's what we're waiting on, but I'll follow up and ask him on that.
Last weekend, I happened to be up in St. Albans, Vermont for a wedding, and they had a unique kind of speed bump. It was a U-shaped groove in the pavement. And the first one I went over, I didn't think much of it until I went over it. And then it rattled my bones to the core. And then I thought, "Well, this is great." I mean, it's not a bump, but it's actually a U groove. Maybe five or six of them in a row, you'll slow down. I mean, I couldn't believe how effective it was to slow the cars down. That may be an option, and easier with the plowing. That may make it easier to plow, but still very effective in slowing vehicles down.
Yeah, I'll talk to him. I know, so in the past, we did not plow the Pines in the winter, but we've been under increased criticism from the dog park people that they want it plowed. I will tell you, that's the last area that's plowed, just because it's not a necessity for us to plow that.
I agree.
And not to waste our resources there. But I know that was a concern, was adding the speed bumps, so maybe that will be a way to address that. I can certainly mention that. Where were you that?
St. Albans, Vermont.
Okay.
Believe me, when I hit these things, I hit the brake immediately. I mean, it rattled your bones to the core. You weren't gonna go fast down these streets. You weren't. All right, we had a... I guess this would almost come under, not reasonably anticipated, but it's kind of close. We have a board member here that's unable to attend due to his job. He's gotta feed his family. It's understandable. But he would have liked to own witness to what's happening. Have we made any advance toward live streaming these meetings on YouTube? The technology exists. Do we, are we leveraging that technology currently?
No, so I've actually spoken to Chris and Tracy in the past about this. There was the company, actually, when I, since I've been here, I've brought it up a few times. The company's called Earth Channel. They actually work right with our website. So, we actually have the ability, it's some equipment, and then it runs seamlessly in the background. You could run it right on our website, so there would be a page on our website for the live message board and live meetings. So, whatever's on our channel would be playing on our website, which I actually used that as an example when we were having problems with the channel dropping out and Chris not knowing about it, because that's an easy way for him to go on our website and see if the message board is up or not. The last time I spoke about it, they were interested in only going ahead with whatever equipment for the current system, but does not have the ability to livestream. So, it is out there. The company exists. It works very well with our current website provider. I strongly recommend it. It was not a lot of money to get it up and running, and it actually would benefit not only the board members that can't be here, but really anyone, so.
Anyone traveling anywhere around the world.
And we've talked in the past about our residents that might have given up Comcast and gone to the Dish and things like that. They don't have our cable access channel. So, that would allow our residents that don't have cable or, you know, use their computer for TV and things like that to watch the meetings and participate.
Would that be a function of the Cable Advisory Committee?
Under the current structures, you have the cable, yes. I mean, it would be, I mean, I suppose I could bring a proposal here. Ultimately, it's the Cable Advisory Committee and Chris to implement it, to go through the equipment and get it installed and implement it. So, it could be a directive, I suppose, of this board to them that you'd like to have that happen.
Well, I think more accessibility, public accessibility is the goal. Total transparency should be the goal. The more people we can get to watch and become informed should be the goal. Any hindrance to that is, in my opinion, detrimental to the cause we're all here for.
And like I said, it really was not a lot of money, and residents did like it. I mean, it was, you know, you could sit on a train, go into work in the morning and watch the meeting if you want from the night before, or watch whatever's replaying, or watch it live in an airport. And that would make it easier. We have had criticisms in the past trying to remotely connect specifically with Mike just because the Wi-Fi might cut out. It might not be the best signal. At times, he couldn't hear what was being said. So, having the ability to have him being able to watch the livestream and just be on a phone, that he could actually participate in the discussion, I think would be huge. But that's me.
Could we encourage the Cable Advisory Committee to pick up this topic at the next meeting? I don't see any drawbacks, only benefits.
No, I'll bring it up.
Would you agree with that statement, that there's only benefits to be drawn from this? The more people that can access our meetings, the better?
Well, I'll agree with that.
So, Ed, it's called Earth Channel, is the name of the company. And I can provide you contact information or whatever to Chris or Tracy.
Terrific.
Yeah, just get that to Tracy. I know we had a couple of meetings that were posted that had to be canceled for one reason or another, so it'll be a week or two before something gets done.
I'll send it to them tomorrow.
And, selectmen done, your business development. I know you've been personally impacted by some of these things in the very recent past, and I would encourage you to reexamine the medical marijuana cultivation. It's a win-win. The residents of Groveland voted for it. The residents of Massachusetts voted for it. It's legal on a state level. It's legal on a federal level. This is the kind of business that could potentially bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars each year to the town coffers that could be used in a number of very beneficial ways. I know you've done a lot of work with that already, and I don't want to...
Do we have, have we had anyone to come in and talk to us? And I know before, there was a people here that was in before us, but like educational people. Someone that's been in, someone that can come in before this town and say, "We do it for Georgetown," or "We do it for Amesbury," or whatever, and come in and educate the people?
I'm sure we could, we could find those folks.
I'm talking, I'm not talking recreational marijuana. I'm talking something that would make business sense for the town, but I'm saying I would not even consider it until we have someone come and sit in front of us and tell us the pros and cons. Because I asked those people that were before, he me before, "How much can you give me a year?" Well, we don't know. I've said it before, I personally think when you get these companies in, after four or five years, they're gonna say, "Well, we have competition. We can't pay the money. We can't..." And it's gonna drop, drop, drop. Maybe they'll make me believe different. Like I said, I would like to have someone sit in front of me, have that conversation. May not do it in public. Maybe a couple of us can sit in a meeting room and talk to them. I don't know, but that's where I'd like to go with it.
Well, I encourage you to look at that avenue again. I think it's, it could be extremely beneficial for all of us. Yes.
Would it make more sense, if you're looking for that kind of feedback, to see if there's somebody from a neighboring town that has already approved it and hear from them directly versus a company?
That would be the second part of the conversation.
Because if you're hearing from a company, you're gonna hear sort of their point of view, but to hear from an actual municipality that has seen the pros and cons might be more beneficial.
What we, at that point, what we'd do is talk to a selectman or a council or something from a town that already has it, see how things are going. I mean, I sat with the people in Wes Newberry over the town manager thing. I could go sit with them for something like that as well. But I definitely think, not only me, it's not me, it's the town people that have that dialogue with the town people as well.
But I think Georgetown would be a good place to start. They've had one for a number of years.
Right, and that has seen ups and downs, that facility that they have. So, I think you get a more honest dialogue with a municipality than a company.
I know what happened. One of the things that I've heard criticism in Georgetown, because I have a relative that was there, they okayed it. They put the one plant in, and now a second plant opened on the other side of the highway. So, now they have two plants, you know what I mean? So, once it's in the door, now the people, the residents were like a little bit upset that they couldn't stop it. You know, it's there, you know what I mean? But again, I think you're talking recreational versus medical in one building as well. In the other building, I think it's gonna be recreational, I think. I forget how it went, but.
Yes, because the companies, the companies early on that got in under medical, when recreational became legal, they had first shot at adding recreational to their existing license. So, a lot of the medical-only companies have become recreational as well. So, it probably is both over there. I know the first company has had some issues. I actually don't know if they're up and running right now. They were closed for a while. They had some layoffs, but...
The nice thing about that is you have Georgetown, and you have a highway that divides it, you know what I mean? So, it's kind of a little old world, you know what I mean, which is nice. But now, it's on the other side of the highway, so it's not, you know what I mean? I'm not speaking on behalf of Georgetown.
No, I agree. And the one last item is the Capital Improvement Committee. We haven't had, I know we had one person reach out. Is that the only response we've had? So, is it then the onus has now fallen upon the Board of Selectmen to take on that responsibility?
Yes, so I believe I copied you all when I sent out, so a couple of weeks ago, I sent out newly revised capital improvement request forms to all the departments. I forget when the deadline is. I think it's October. Yes, absent of a committee of at least three, it is the Board of Selectmen.
So, how many members do you have?
Currently, we have one. Dan McDonald's has expressed interest that if we need him to fill in that vacancy, he would be interested.
And I kind of said the same thing, so, I mean, do you think it's important to have that board?
It's really up to you guys. If you feel you wanna see, go through the process for a year, then that's, it's really up to you. If you want to fill the committee and let them have at it, or, I mean, ultimately, they're an advisory committee anyways, and they report to this board, so it really just depends on your preference. I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to have this board, maybe in collaboration with the Finance Board, go through one cycle. And then, I do think our bylaw needs to be revised on capital improvements. I think requiring projects to be finalized by like January 9th is a little ridiculous. We don't know anything in January. We don't know what our revenues are. We don't know what the state aid's gonna look like. So, trying to make some decisions on capital on January 9th, I think, is a bit premature, but that's what our bylaw calls for. So, again, it might be helpful for you all to go through the process, meet with the departments for a year. It's really preference, however you want to handle it.
I sat on that board for four years, and I think it would be extremely enlightening and eye-opening for this board to do that for a year. I think they'd have a much greater appreciation for what those folks did for the last 20 years for this town.
The bottom line is, the end of the day, it comes before here, and it comes before finance. They can go out and get the proposals. They can put the package together, but it's gonna come here no matter what.
Right, and capital doesn't do, the departments have to do all that legwork. So, the departments are the ones getting the proposals, getting that...
And then they're gonna bring it in here.
Correct, so again, they were really an advisory board. I would consider the last few years more of a wish list that capital put through just because at the time, we didn't know how it was gonna be funded, what was gonna be funded. Yes, this board ultimately makes the decision with town meeting, so. We are kind of late in the game, I would say, to get a committee together, but it's still possible. So, however you want to handle it, we do have, if Bill's volunteering, he would be the third and make a quorum. So, however you'd like to proceed.
I mean, if it's a situation where you have a deadline that doesn't make sense, what's the sense of doing it? Okay, you know me. If I was on that board, I would, if we're talking about a fire engine, I would be going out looking at fire engines, new and used and whatever. I would weigh the situations. I would do the legwork. That's what I believe the board should do. I'm only saying that. It could be a police car. It could be a computer system, whatever. Then I would be the person that would come here and say, "Hey, okay, selectmen here. Finance there. What do you think?" But if it's the timeline and the bylaws wrong, what's the sense? I mean, we can still do the work, but we can't get in here on time, then really...
Right, but I think in order to change the bylaw, I think if this group goes... Right, but I think in order to change the bylaw, I think if this group goes through the process, you'll realize that the bylaw needs to change. Because I think the bylaw's been wrong for years, the way it's structured. I just don't think it makes sense in our environment, like I said, to have those projects due. There's no requirement to offer a funding mechanism, there's no requirement for... So I think we need to retool it. Like I said, maybe it's best that it's this group and the finance sort of going through the process. You can actually see what you wanna put in your new bylaw. And then we work on that, and then you form a new committee and, you know, get them going to the new requirements, is what I would recommend, but...
Right, it's kind of best to act course of action, because we'll all get the education while we're going through the process too.
Right, right.
And then we'll realize where the speed bumps are, where the hiccups are.
I wanna do it if I'm there or here, I'm still gonna do it.
And you could take the projects individually and split them up and have each person do, you know, dive into a project if you want, depending on what comes back.
And the thing is too, is you don't wanna have, supposedly what happened before, they do their legwork, it gets in here, then we start asking questions again. And then like about the radios, the fire radios and what have you, but we knew what we talked to them about. They may not know the whole conversation, and then it starts an argument, so.
Doesn't start an argument, what it does is...
Undermines what they, their hard work.
It creates that, yeah, impression that their work wasn't valued in the first place. And I don't, I don't think that's what we wanna convey as a message.
All right, so we'll go with the, let's skip it.
So we'll just continue down the path that I have, that the capital requests have gone out. When they come back, I'll compile them and then just present them to this board.
I think it's the best method right now. We'll do it for a year and then we'll fix it. That's all I have for old and unfinished business. Other items not reasonably anticipated, time of posting, I don't know if anybody has any.
No.
We have Selectmen's time. So we'll start with you, Mr. Dunn.
I kind of went over everything. I talked about the, you talked, I was gonna talk about the Capitol Board, so you did that. Lance Sales, Town Manager. No, I think we're good.
We try to be very thorough here, so I've been done. Selectman Watson?
We're under Selectmen's reports?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I don't have anything, no.
Okay, and we did have a meeting of the Building Committee on Tuesday. And basically, we're still on schedule, moving the project forward as expeditiously as possible. The next big date on the calendar is October 31st, Halloween. So I need everybody to go out there and say hello to Naveenah, light a candle at your local church, and pray that the MSBA approves this project, because that's their day to vote. That's a big date in Penn Tucket and Groveland history. So mark that down and do us all a favor and do whatever you can to make that happen. And that was basically the, that's the bulk of our meeting, it really didn't last long, we just went over some key dates. So that's really all I have to report as far as Selectmen's reports. So move right on to correspondence. We have executive session minutes from October 1st, 2018, minutes from October 1st, 2018. We have a letter from the Building Inspectorate regarding 64 Washington Street, which I think we already talked about. We have an email from Selectwoman Carpenter Delory Binstone, Board of Health Clerk regarding statements made. We have letters regarding the 2018 Veterans Day Ceremony to be held Saturday, November 10th, 2018 at 10:30.
If I can just interrupt quickly?
Please.
So based on the letter, as always, Dave Tuttle is looking for representatives from this board that would be available to speak. So if anyone would like to speak at that, I can certainly respond back to him. You can let me know at the next meeting, there's still plenty of time, but...
Yeah, where is it in, oh, I can make myself available.
Yeah, so it's usually held here. It will be held outside, but they're doing it on Saturday because of the 100th anniversary of the ending of World War I, that I think Haverhill is doing a big ceremony, I believe.
We have letters and attachments from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to the Groveland Housing Authority regarding concerns HUD has relative to a number of issues that relate to the management of the federal public housing program in Groveland. And we have a draft November 26, 2018 special meeting warrant. And we'll move right along to Finance Director's time, you're up.
Okay. So I just have a few. I would like to remind everyone that Pumpkin Fest is quickly approaching. So we have our fourth annual Pumpkin Fest scheduled for Thursday, October 25th. We will start setting up at the end of this week. So people can drop their pumpkins off anytime from the 19th to the 25th. If we have a rain date, it will be Saturday of the 27th. So information is on our website, information is on the message board out front. I did send a flyer over to the schools today, so hopefully that will go out to all of the kids in the Vagnell and the middle school. But that is a great time. We seem to learn every year what things we can change and tweak. We have our final meeting on Wednesday to wrap up all of those festivities, but that is shaping up to be a great night. The consultants for the Fire Department, at the last meeting, we spoke about that this board all, everyone wanted to meet with them, so we need to identify a date. I don't think it's, I would say I wouldn't recommend doing it on a regular meeting night. I think you should have a special meeting with just the Fire Department consultants and/or members of the Finance Board. But I wanted to put that out to you all to see if you wanted to do it on a separate meeting night, and then we have to identify a night that works for everybody, or if you wanted to try and fit it in on Monday.
I can't speak on behalf of everybody, but I think this is such a specialized subject that we should probably meet on a separate night. Because this would be a very focused, very specialized meeting. That I don't think we wanna be distracted by any of the business at hand. Would anybody disagree with that? Is that the way you'd like to go, gentlemen? Or would you like to see it as part of a regular meeting?
I'm good with that. Why don't we just do it another Monday, add a Monday in? Can we add a Monday in?
That makes the most sense.
Okay.
I would suggest then we reach out to MRI, get a list of dates that are convenient for them, or that can they meet anyway?
He told me he would make it work. I will say they will have to come back on a Tuesday to meet with members of the Fire Department because they had a departmental training the last time they were out here, so they met with the command staff, not any of the fire staff. And they would like to still meet with them, so they will be out here on a Tuesday for them. He said he'll make, they'll try and make whatever dates that you all are available work for them. So I can certainly give him a couple of our off Mondays. Excuse me, maybe like November 5th. The 5th and the 19th, we are off, oh, the 19th's the week of Thanksgiving, so. I don't know if they can make it next Monday, but I can certainly speak to them and see if, you know, maybe the 5th is a couple of weeks out, that gives them enough time.
Well, if they seem to be amenable to just about any date, the issue would be us.
Right.
So why don't you blast us an email with a couple of dates? The date where the majority can be, we'll just go with that. If we can't have all five members, well, can't have all five members. But if we can get the majority to agree on one date, we'll have to run with that.
But you would prefer an alternate Monday? That seems, Mondays are good for everybody?
I think it's, the subject matter is such an important issue that it should be discussed alone.
Right, no, I would agree to that.
Well, if they're coming back on a Tuesday to speak with the Fire Department, is that gonna be speaking to them during the day, or are they gonna speak to them at night?
No, so they come out at night to meet with them, when they're in their training.
All right, so that wouldn't make sense to do it on the same night.
No, I mean, it could be, depending on time-wise, they could certainly maybe meet here like 6:00 to 7:00, and then go over there 7:00. But I don't know, you might need more than an hour with them. Where you're all meeting at once, it may be more of a engaging dialogue.
Yeah, and they might, I don't wanna keep offices, you know, up till 12 o'clock. I don't know what that discussion, the length of that discussion is, so maybe it's best if we do it on separate days.
Okay, I'll email the board tomorrow. And then... So the only other thing I have, and Bill Dunn, this is, I guess, more towards you for your help. The vendor that has provided our holiday flowers in Elm Park is no longer in business. So they are no longer going to be doing our holiday flowers.
Oh, I'm thinking the other flower.
No, so I didn't know if you had suggestions. I will say we've paid about $1,400 a year for what they did down there. I don't know if you know someone else that we could reach out to that can do that kind of stuff for us. Also, I know it's a little early, but we will be in need of two Christmas trees. So since the one out here at Town Hall did not take last year, it would be great to have another tree here. We now have lights, and it was really a great thing last year. Residents really were very receptive of the two trees, so...
Yeah, so what happens a lot of times, people will donate a tree in their yard to the town. So I don't know how we go about it, if we maybe ask anyone that wants to donate a Christmas tree, wants the word gets out, then you'll be surprised how many trees come this way.
Yeah, so that was kind of my PSA, that we need two trees, if anyone would like to donate. Or knows of a tree that might be available for donation as we get closer. I would like to obviously get them lit a little sooner. We were under the gun last year waiting on lights and stuff. So, you know, maybe the beginning of December, to have them lit all December would really be great for us. So if anyone knows of any trees, feel free to reach out.
And they should go through you as opposed to just dumping trees in the lawn?
Yes, please. And that is all I have for you tonight.
Okay.
Or even a business may wanna donate one or something too, you don't know.
And if we don't get any takers, Bill, if you can transport it, I'll buy the tree, I'll buy one of them. If you can pick it up. I mean, if we have no donors, I don't wanna go out a Christmas tree, that's just, we can't do that.
Well, I mean, we could probably buy one too, if we had someone that was, if we had them available. I mean, we needed, we need a good-sized tree out there, given the size of the town.
What did I say, something funny? All set?
Yes.
Okay, Selectmen's time. Selectman Watson?
Yeah, I just got one item. Perhaps for the next meeting, we have an update on the cost so far to renovate the old electric company building. I know they're still working down there. It seems to be taking forever to do that. Let's see if we can get a cost estimate, not a cost estimate, a cost of what we've spent so far, and an estimate on when that building will be completed. I saw them today, they're working on the roof of that. See if we can get a cost on it.
Sure.
Selectman Dunn?
No, I just had a question, I don't, if you know. The company that did the, it's really nothing, it's just more curiosity, the company did the Route 97 project? Their equipment's still all over the place, like town, out in front of the gate at town highway. Are they gonna come get that stuff?
That I don't know. I will say, I did send another email today to the group, wanting to know when they're gonna come back and fix the issues that we identified, that Selectman Watson met with them and other representatives over a month ago now, I think. Maybe they're leaving it out there until those are done, I don't know. I can ask Bob.
Yeah, can you get him to write him a letter, because there was, that equipment is the subcontractor. The contractor was more of a paper pusher.
Okay, so the equipment is the subcontractors?
Right, it's just that I'm sure it's leaking in the ground, it's, you know. Someone said some of the stuff is down behind the light department too, but I don't, I haven't been back there to see it, but, so I don't know.
All set?
There's one other thing, I can't remember that, it left my brain. I'll come back to it.
Hello, I'll give you a timeout and you can come back. So I have two things. One, there's been a lot of discussion in hoopla about our last meeting, in specific, the conversations and discussions we had with the Board of Health. In order to create complete transparency, can we put all the documents up on our website so that people who want to know what the real story behind this is are free to examine the documents that we've been examining? And then they can make their own judgments and be just as informed as we are? Is that possible?
It's all public information, so yes, if you would like it, I can post it.
I would like that. I think it would go a long way toward understanding what the issues are. And one more item. In the correspondence, I'm sure you all got, there were a number of letters regarding the Groveland Housing Authority. All of them are very problematic. Many of which have gone unresolved for months, almost two years. It has reached the, escalated to the point to where now our involvement is necessary. There is a significant possibility where they will lose funding because of this, these, some of these inadequacies. As a matter of fact, I am going to have to take online courses now because of these delinquencies, which I'm not happy about. I have enough to do in my own life, nobody has to create work for me. But unfortunately, it has been created for me. I'd like to get the Housing Authority on the next agenda to discuss how they plan on resolving these issues. Why some of these letters have gone unanswered for almost two years. Why they have gone unanswered. And I'd like them to be able to discuss what they plan to do if they do in fact lose their funding because of these... Man, I wanna search for a word. I'm at a loss for what to call this. Other than I'm just very, very disappointed in this, in this board that seems to have been negligent in their duty. And if we can't get them here, I'd like to know why. And I'd like to know what their plans are to resolve all these issues, dissatisfaction of HUD and everyone else. I get yelled at enough in my own life. I don't need any help.
Do they need to answer to us?
So they're elected?
They're an elected body.
By, by the town people?
The residents, yeah, so they are an official Town of Groveland Board Committee elected by the residents.
I definitely think they should give us the answers that we need. I mean, I never had them in when I was a chairman, probably should have, but never did, but...
Did you get a chance to read some of these letters, Bill?
I haven't yet, because I was very busy. It's the first week, I didn't, but I will.
So I will say, although they don't answer to this board, yes, HUD has now gotten the chairman involved in...
I've gotta take online courses, I've gotta do homework, I've gotta take time now away from my family to do things that I shouldn't have to do because somebody couldn't do their job. Bill, I encouraged you to read it, if you haven't, Selectman Watson, I encouraged you to read it too.
Yeah, I read it.
I started to read it, and I was so captivated, it was like watching a train wreck. You wanted to turn away, but you couldn't.
So I can certainly reach out to the members of the committee and invite them to attend the next meeting to address the questions that you presented.
So this online thing should have been, one of them should have been answered by them, or done by them?
I'm assuming they have to too, I don't know. It requires the chairman of the executive body of the board to attend this online training class, or several classes, I don't know.
There is nothing for me about that.
There was a deadline or something that was missed by the director of the Housing Authority that now requires Bill to do something.
There were also several complaints that you looked through that have gone unanswered, unresolved, dissatisfaction of HUD. They need to be taken care of, I mean...
So they must have a chair of the board, vice chair?
Yes.
I would say that you need to have the board come in, right, and explain what's going on.
Unfortunately, part, Bill, is as we found with many elected boards in this town, we have very little power. And this is probably another, another reason, another group that the town should really look at hard and say, "Are we really getting the best value out of an elected board as opposed to an appointed board?"
I don't know that the Housing Authority can be appointed, though.
Ah, then what do we do here? Do I just keep doing homework for the rest of my life?
No, but I think this one might be statutally required to be elected because there's governor's appointees to the committee, to the committee and things. So I'd have to look into if that can be an appointed board. I'm not entirely sure of that.
So now if the person sitting in this chair doesn't take the onus to do all this work that now I've been basically delegated to do, what happens then?
To be honest, I don't know, because I didn't read the full letter when he gave it to you. So I don't know. I don't know what happens if you don't take their classes.
You'll end up in jail.
I don't know. So I can certainly-
Well, that's the part that kills me, Mr. Dunn, because I'll end up in jail for something I wasn't elected to do in the first thinking place.
That's government for you.
That's not government. That's ridiculous. That's pachycahda all the way around.
And there might be a deadline. I don't really remember, but there might be a deadline.
Seven AM tomorrow.
But I will look into see if that's something that-
They miss 17 deadlines. If I miss one, what happens? Do they cuff me?
I don't know.
I know the police chief, he'll get me out.
But I will look into that. And I'll, I will read the full letter that he emailed, that you have a hard copy of here. But he did email it, and he CC'd me. So I will review it, and I'll just, I'll let you know when you need to take that by.
Yeah, if there's any, you know, if you can find me a good mouthpiece in case. I appreciate that, too. Just more for lawyer.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn is second. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
So I need the signatures, don't forget.
Yeah, you always need signatures.
And here is the conservation restriction.
Doctor Bartholomew, how are you today? There you are.